Unfortunately, we only have two of the candidates running tonight. A third candidate said that she didn't, uh, she, she couldn't find the time to come. I, I'm trying to put the, I, I, I'm not trying to disparage her one way or another. I know how life is and how hectic we all are. I just want you to know that she was invited and that she did say that she could not attend tonight. But we do have two candidates for two, see, two open seats on, on town council. And they are Joshua Berry and, okay, I can't even read from here, I'm so sorry. And Jason Forbes. And they have, uh, drawn to see who goes first, and we're gonna go back and forth so that Josh is, I mean, so that, Jason is not always first, but Jason, you are first to make an opening remarks.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for showing up this evening, getting an opportunity to meet us. My name is Jason Forbes. Welcome to Arusta County. He's almost from the county, he's from Edelman, but. I'm a Prescott native. I moved to Herman approximately 12 years ago. My business is located in Hampden, where a Prescott-based business, I moved down south to run our cell division. Herman has welcomed me with open arms. I certainly love this community. It's become my home. It's where I see myself spending the rest of my life, hopefully. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I'm also a veteran of the United States Merchant Marine Fleet. I spent 15 years sailing abroad on oil tankers as an engineer. I've seen a vast variety of the world, and got a lot of things. But I am home. I'm back home in Maine, and like I said, I've made Herman my home. And I look forward to being in collaboration with perhaps Mr. Berry to move the city, to move our town, our community forward. And I thank you all for being here and for your questions.
Yep, thank you. Nice to see everybody here tonight. And I will just, for the record, is that better? Okay, thank you. Just nice to see everybody here tonight. I would like to mention for the record that Holton is the county seat, Arusta County, so it is not, not, not the first time I've, I've been noted of, of Holton barely being in the county, but. You know, like I said, Josh Berry, I've been living here in town, in Herman for the last 11, 12 years, with my wife. We have three young children that we're raising here in Herman, actively involved in all things Herman. I've been working for the town the last eight years. Most of you know that I've resigned from my position as town manager. I've been the town manager for the last two years. Still looking to stay involved in the community. I feel like I've always had a drive to serve my local community, Holton being the first town I worked in all through high school and college. And it's just been, uh, I, I get a lot of gratitude of, of being involved in the local community, and that's my goal here as far as continuing on with the community as a council member, is just to stay involved and just ensure that we keep all the good things we have going. Try to stay involved and keep them heading in that direction. Thank you.
Now, I didn't go to the written question, but if I remember correctly, I asked what you thought Herman would look like in 10 years? And what did the town council do to get it to become like that?
Yeah, so to, to answer that question, it was, you asked us to kind of envision Herman in the year 2034. And it, thinking about that and reflecting on that a little bit, I feel currently we as a town are reaping the rewards of previous councils and I would say school board and school committees for where we are now. We're, we're a town that is in great financial position. We have very limited debt, and we have to give a lot of credit to the people that came before us and, and current elected boards of maintaining that. And, and I think that's important to recognize and important to keep that mindset going. So in the next 10 years, we're hopefully in still a strong financial situation, low taxes, but offering a very good service to the residents and businesses. And I, I feel that's what the town has done. Herman is one of the most desirable communities in the state of Maine, one of the, the fastest growing. And I think we need to continue that and do what we can to ensure that we, you know, are conscious of the growth and are planning for the growth to ensure that the resources are, are there when needed.
It's two cores.
Actually, after reading Mr. Berry, I do see Herman as a thriving community. Done a very good job in the past. 10 years from now, though, if we keep on the trajectory we're on now, I don't see any more economic growth or potential for economic growth. And the reason for that is our infrastructure. Our infrastructure currently, we have fair, is it, yeah, track pump stations in, in Herman that we maintain. There's a fifth one that nobody will claim ownership of. We have approximately seven miles of underground piping. We have zero customer base. We don't do any of our own billing, Bangor does. Therefore, we have zero revenue. And we are in a 30-year contract with the city of Bangor, which is ready to expire in two years. We need to start being proactive, not reactive. When people reach out and say, we need to start thinking about getting a sewer crew. We need to start thinking about INI reports and see why there's so much stormwater going through our systems. The answer has been, they worry about that when this expires. Well, that's not what you should do. That's what's happening right now in the town of Rockport with Camden. Their local interdepartment expired two years ago. They have been in litigation for two years. It was cost tens of thousands of dollars to the communities. They couldn't come to a resolution. And on the 11th, when we vote, Rockport's voting to go on an individual waste treatment plant at the $233 million. This is something any of you can go home and Google yourself. This happens in the communities. We need to form a committee collaboratively with our stakeholders in the community, business owners in the community. Thank you.
I hope you all have time to continue that. Mr. Forbes, the first question. Every new housing development and apartment complex has the potential to impact services and increase taxes. More homes mean the need for more classrooms and teachers, more road maintenance, et cetera. Is, is it time to consider curbing residential growth?
Again, I'll go back to my first answer. I don't believe we should curb any growth in our community. However, we have to look at the area of our community. We only have infrastructure for wastewater and clean drinking water provided from the city in a very limited area of Herman. It's all on that side of the railroad tracks on Route 2 and Coldbrook. It's not here in the residents that live in the village or live on the outskirts of Carmel or Lurven, but our tax dollars are paying for that. The only way we're going to be able to expand and continue to build in growth and bring in more industry, more homes, is by taking care of this basic, simple infrastructure. You have to have wastewater and clean water. You have to have this. We have the, you pay for transmission costs for getting your electricity, whether you get it through Versant, Central Main Power, or a solar power, you're paying transmission to whoever owns that light. We have these lights in Herman, and we are getting zero revenue, but yet we're paying to maintain these four pump stations. So we need to collaborate and come up with a plan so that we could start to generate some usable fundings. If you look in our budget for this year, we have $500 a hundred per sewer.
Thank you. Good answer, though. Mr. Berry, when you talk, could you be closer to the microphone or could you? Thank you very much. Do you need me to repeat the question?
If you, if you would, thank, yes.
Every new housing development and apartment complex has the potential to impact services and increase taxes. More homes means the need for more classrooms, teachers, and more road maintenance, et cetera. Is it time to consider curbing residential growth?
I, I don't believe it's time to curb the residential growth, but this is something that we have actively been working on the last few years. And what we have determined as a group at the town office and working with the current council is to allow our current zoning to work as it's established. So a lot of the growth that we have seen over the last five to six years have come in ways of zone changing in town. And so we have actively been not pursuing those zone changes or, or the, the applicants for zone changes. We have informed that we're not as open to that type of development or as far as allowing different uses in different zones that we currently have. So I think letting our land use ordinance and our zoning do its own work has helped that already.
Thank you. Mr. Berry, the next question. What is your opinion of the town's infrastructure and buildings? Are the school facilities sufficient to provide modern and competitive education? And what other infrastructure does the town need?
Yeah, and I would agree with Mr. Forbes as far as the water and, and the sewer comments he made. And, and those are all things that we are actively working on right now. I think Herman facility-wise is, is in need of some improvements across the board. I would say as far as the town office, voting facilities that we have, community opportunities for residents, you know, buildings that, that they could use. We have a great area down at Jackson Beach that could be utilized even more. So I do think the overall facility discussion in town needs to be had. And I would say that's one that we're not having now, but I feel that we should start going and, and start to, to get going, I guess I should say.
Yes, as far as facilities, I agree with Mr. Berry. I think there needs to be a community center in the future. We need a place for our senior citizens to be able to gather and our children to be able to have scouting events and utilize that facility for voting so that we don't interrupt the students here at schools and so on and so forth. But as far as the school buildings and stuff, we're sitting on an area right now at the high school that is known to be contaminated with PFAS and had water drinking issues. Again, not to beat a dead horse, but if we look into our infrastructure and look into funding to bring our wastewater treatment into the center of town, and we were able to hook this community school, the elementary school, the middle school, to public sewer and public water, it would diminish the chances of having PFAS in the water. Their results right now going on is studies on MDI with three of their schools that looks like that they are perhaps contaminating themselves with PFAS because of their, they have a leach field, as we do on this facility, and a septic tank. And the janitorial closets will dump their wa, water from their mops and buckets and the strippers for the wax and the wax contaminants leach into the ground and the PFAS stays on site, so.
All right, let's see. You go, see.
Whatever you feel comfortable with, Josh. I'm good with that.
Mr. Forbes, you're first. Is it time for Herman to have its own ambulance service?
I'm, I'm a little torn on the appropriate approach to answer that question. It could. I believe that the track we're on right now with fire rescue is a good track. Quick response times, we don't have to wait for somebody to come out of Bangor. I know as an aging adult myself, I have suffered from a number of health issues in the past few years. I do feel a lot more comfortable knowing that the fire department can send an EMS response to my home in a matter of a few minutes instead of 15, 20 minutes. I could have somebody at my door, whether it be my wife, myself, or our grandchildren having an issue. That, that lets me sleep easier at night, yes. So I, I don't believe we have to look any further than what we currently have going now with the fire department.
Yeah, so this has been an ongoing discussion. And it's heightened over the last couple of years. I don't know as far as, I, I would say the EMS world in general is stretched very thin. And I, I believe looking at all options to ensure that the residents have the proper care that they need is important. Whether that means we have our own ambulance service or we are collaborating with other towns to provide that. I, I don't know what the, the best answer is that, on that. However, that is part of the ongoing discussions that we are currently having. And I feel we have all the right people in place as far as department heads, counselors, stakeholders involved to come up with the best solution for the town of Herman. I think it's easy to say, yes, we just need to go and have a full ambulance. It just, we have to be mindful of the cost and make sure we're doing it responsibly and not get too big too quick.
Mr. Berry, what do you consider Herman's best assets and what could the town be doing better?
I consider Herman's best assets to be its youth. I feel that is our, our strongest asset and, and one that we need to focus on the most. I feel the discussions that we have been having townwide, I feel everybody here in town is, is on the same page as far as we're doing what we can, and, and council's a little bit different. But there, there needs to be a focus on providing the youth, the, the, as much possible exposure to as many potential programs and, and ways to help disadvantaged youth gain their full potential. So, so I feel that the youth of Herman are our biggest assets, and I think that's a big focus of mine is to ensure that we're offering as much to them as we possibly can. Not to take away from other residents, but to me, I'm a recreator at heart. And, and that's just a big part of my life and what I grew up with, and I benefited tremendously from that. And I want to just ensure that the kids of Herman get that same opportunity.
I agree completely with Josh about the youth being an important part of the community, but I, I feel the people as a whole in general in Herman are the best commodity. I, like I said, I transplanted here 12 years ago, and I was so bad I would travel to Prescott every few weeks to get a haircut. I'm a good old boy from the county. Everybody knows everybody. I'm related to everybody. We'd all hang out at the same place, get to see each other. I started to get that interaction here with the community. It started with Patty Durn, as a matter of fact. She was the very first person when I'd walk into a room, "Hi, Jason, how are you?" And then when I'd walk into C and K, her husband would say, "Good morning, Jason, how are you?" And I started to get that feeling of, hey, Herman's home. Now every Saturday morning, you'll find me at Dice Hearts with the little boys having breakfast at 6:30 every Saturday morning. It's become my home. So I think the people of Herman are actually the best asset. And our children, our youth, they're our next generation. They're a tremendous asset. We are a tremendous community. I've embraced this community as it has embraced me, and I thank you all for that. And I look forward to what we can do together in the future to make the town even better. Thank you.
Mr. Forbes, what neighborhood do you live in and why? And what are your favorite places to spend time in the town?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit hard of hearing. I do have hearing. It's the very first part of that question. Could you repeat that?
What neighborhood do you live in?
I reside at 223 New Boston Road. I'm at the end of the New Boston Road, down by the Fuller Road. I live next door to the Olivers. My favorite part of Herman, my favorite part of Herman probably is the ski mountain area. I enjoy watching my nephews. We go there often and watch my nephew ski. I used to be an outdoor rec when I was younger and in better shape. I used to love to ski myself, too. But I, I, I love watching the community, the people from other communities coming to our community and all enjoying what we have to offer. I think that's my favorite part of Herman is the mountainous area.
Yeah, Eric.
Could, could you repeat the last part of that question?
What neighborhood do you live in and why? And where are your favorite places in town to spend time?
Okay, thank you. I live on Hillcrest Drive, which is part of Evergreen Estates, subdivision up on the top of the hill at Route 2. I, I live there because it's a, it's a small community. We originally were living on the Fuller Road. There was a lot of traffic. Like I said, I have three young children and just wanted to get off the, the busier road. So we moved over there so our kids could run out on their bikes and not have to worry about the traffic so much. Probably my favorite place to spend time in Herman currently is down at the baseball and softball facilities. The athletic complex is down there. We're down there almost every night during the week and on the weekends. And I've, I've got to say, the new football and track facility is probably one of our biggest destinations that we go to as a family quite often. So there's a lot of good things in Herman that we, we frequent.
Mr. Berry, how would you encourage entrepreneurship, innovation, and the growth of small business in Herman?
To come down to the town office and, and talk to us. And we have our fingertips in a lot of different programs. I, I say we because I'm, I will always feel like I'm part of the team in Herman. We have a very robust and business-friendly attitude, and I think that's also one of Herman's greatest assets as well, is we, we encourage it. We do everything we can to help, whether it is a home occupation filling out their permits or large industry, getting them through planning board. We are, we are very business, business-friendly and take a lot of pride in that. And, and I think that's, a, a good first step would be coming down and especially talking to our Economic Development Director, Assistant Town Manager, Scott Perkins. It's a good first step.
I think all a person has to do to see what's our community. You can drive through downtown Herman, any side road. Entrepreneurship thrives in this community. There's more people that have their own businesses. You have Bottle Redemption Centers, the Mosquito Man. You have lawn care companies. You can't turn a corner and not see somebody with a lawn care company. Snow Prower removal. Frankie Noes has his own shop on Route 2. It's, the list goes on and on and on. This area just seems to develop entrepreneurship and has for several generations. It just, you, I've never been in an area with so many self-starters in my life. And it's one of the reasons why I drew our company to come to this area. I, I hope to expand my own business from this area. But yeah, Herman is just, take a look. Don't take my word for it. Just drive through the community and start saying, he's right. Wow, there's one, there's one, there's one, there's one. It's just mind-blowing the number of self-driven entrepreneurs that are in this area, and it's remarkable.
Thank you. Mr. Forbes, what are your thoughts on the tax base? And what could be done better in terms of revenue growth and expense management?
Okay, I'm gonna have to go back to my first statement. Revenue growth, when I was trying to explain about generating revenue from the use of our septic system that we currently have in place, we, we have a customer that utilizes our infrastructure that's not even in Herman. Doesn't even pay a cent in taxes to our community, but utilizes our facility. We should be charging a transmission fee for that. We should be having a committee get together, establish who the contacts are, who our customer base would be. Bangor doesn't even know everybody that's hooked onto our system right now. There's several pump stations in town that have never had an INI report done on them. They don't know who's hooked to them, how long they've been hooked there. We just went a few years ago, there was a $5 million bill, I believe, owed to Bangor because of it. We needed to look into that further, just the ball that dropped. We can build a revenue base by charging our own customers, but we have to hire somebody to do the billing. We have to hire a septic contact, point of contact for our infrastructure. We all need to work collaboratively together, establish a committee, and move forward and see what we can do in order to generate revenue. If we don't do that, I'm not trying to put any fear in anybody's, but there's a strong possibility we could be in the same predicament that's going on in Camden and Rockport at the moment. We could be voting in a few years on, well, right now it's $33 million, but five years from now, after litigations, months and months and months of talking about things, could be $50 million. That, that's a tune that's pretty hard to swallow. I just think we need to be proactive now instead of reactive.
Yeah, and I would, there's a lot of different ways to increase the revenues for the, for the town. I think our biggest area that we need to look in and expand upon is our industrial side of town, business side of town. A lot of that money comes in and it's captured in a TIF program that we're able to shelter that value. So we're, we're not expending as much on state valuation side of things with school subsidies and county taxes. But when we, when we generate more business, we just overall generate more revenue for the, the town. As far as excise taxes, we, we bring in about $45 million a year in TIF revenues. And the more that we can increase that, I, I feel the, the more impact we will see. And finding more creative ways to expend our TIF revenues. They've opened up different avenues for towns to be using these funds, and it can go to certain facilities in towns, certain first responder purchases that are made, and really getting the businesses to start buying in a little bit on, you're bringing this large facility to town, you're getting, you know, it's going to cause some stress on the municipal side of things with how we respond to these different types of businesses, and they're very open to that. So I, I think the, really continuing to push the commercial and industrial growth in town will help that immensely.
It's time for the next question, right? Or did you?
If I had to then.
Sure. He gets to add to it, I think, too.
I agree 100% with Mr. Berry. The only way to build more revenue is to bring more commerce in. We can't bring in more commercial industrial. What he's neglecting to say is we are at 100% capacity of flow rate to our agreement with the city of Bangor. 100% of capacity. We cannot add any more. We cannot bring any more industrial to Herman. We cannot hook up anything else to this system. We are at max capacity. Until we do an INI report, find out why our stormwater is infiltrating, and that will give us more capacity usage. We have to address this issue now before we try to move forward on anything else. We are at max capacity. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not saying that you have 40, 50% more. I'm saying the last two places it just hooked up in Herman maxed you out. You're at 100%. I'm wrong, Mr. Berry.
So what I would say to that is we are currently working with Bangor on this. We have the INI reports and the studies. If it wasn't an annual town meeting question last year, it may be on there again this year. But this is something that we're currently working on. I don't know as if the current development completely maxed us out as we are working with Bangor wastewater. Plymouth Engineering has been heavily involved in these because we are reaching max capacity. And any further development certainly needs to, we need to account for that. But we, we are working on that as we speak, and specifically that agreed.
Mr. Berry, what I think you're missing was, the last INI report was done eight years ago. I did it. Nothing's been done in eight years. I personally did it. I'm the last person that camera inspected any footage of line. If you walk into Mr. Perkins' office right now today and you ask him for any drawings, any maps of the waste treatment systems in Herman, I guarantee you it'll be in my hand.
So with, with those studies, though, there's a lot of federal funding that's available for those. And you have to go through the proper process to gain those funds. So it's not, it's not as easy as just saying, hey, we need to go do this study right now. There's a lot of different applications, a lot of different hoops to jump through. And that, I will say, Scott Perkins has been working diligently on that on the last couple of years, and we're about to see a lot of gains from that.
Did you have a third-party independent contractor reach out to you recently about taking care of pump stations?
I don't believe so.
I know for a fact you did because I sent him. The answer was, we'll talk to you after this has expired. How can we do anything proactive if we're doing react? How can we do anything proactive if we're doing react? So, so which type of third party? We're talking to an independent third party contractor to come in and take care of the waste treatment that was being done right now by the city of Bangor to maintain the pump stations. You do not have any point of contact for sewer in the town. You don't have anybody on call. If there's a high flow rubble going off, if there's a mechanical issue, you have nobody to reach out to right now. You're relying on this 30-year-old contract with Bangor. You're relying on Bangor to send their workers out in the middle of the night and take care of that issue. This contract's got to expire and you have nobody, zero, nobody trying to take care of that.
Thank you. There is, no, no, I, I thought it was an important issue.
I would like to.
Yes, Mr. Berry.
It's not as though we aren't paying attention to this and we're in a, a grave danger of not having any response to anything that goes on in Herman, because that, that's not true. We, we sit down with Bangor, they are telling us, hey, eventually Herman, you're going to have to take care of this on your own. They're not saying, hey, we're done, it's all on you. That's not how they're approaching this.
Thank you, though I think we've, we've addressed this issue. Uh, Mr. Berry, what do you see as the three most important areas to focus on improving should you get elected? And give, uh, give, supporting and using up those on how you plan to achieve these improvements?
So I, I feel initially, I, I'd like to see the council start establishing annual goals, um, and, and working on bigger picture items. I think that's important. Um, that's something that we discussed when I first took over as town manager. And, uh, you know, just in the, as busy as we have been, we haven't really begun a good process on that, so I think that's important. Um, I think communication with the community is big and something that we're continually trying to improve. Uh, I hear a lot of, uh, you know, I wasn't aware of this, I wasn't aware of that, but we have actively brought on new staff and are implementing new technological advances and, and trying to get information out to people with keeping our senior citizen population in mind. Um, so we do still continue to, um, mail out as much information as we can. Um, and I just, I really think we're not far off with, um, how we have been working with the school and the, the, the town and school relationship, I think is very critical. Uh, and I'd like to continue moving that in the right direction, which I think we have had, made tremendous strides over the last couple of years, uh, with, with thanks to, uh, some of the school committee members and current council members, uh, in just making sure we're all on the same page and communicating properly and, and being as effective as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Forbes.
I agree with Mr. Berry. First of all, I apologize to the people of an audience. I have nothing but respect for Mr. Berry. I think he's done a wonderful job as our town manager. I, I have a tendency to be like a pit bull and I grab a hole of something, I, I firmly believe in it, which is the reason why I'm running. I also am, uh, there's no gray area with me. I'm black and white. I'm a man of my word. I believe the only thing you truly own in your life is your word. When you're dead and your family's over your hole and they look down at you, the only thing that you did own in your entire existence was your word. So I give you my word that I will, uh, work hard for the people of this community. I will look forward to working collaboratively with the other council members. Again, I believe we have to be proactive, not reactive. We need to take care of issues right now instead of kicking the can down the road. We have to stop, we have to slay our hands on the table and say enough is enough. These needless, needless dollars that we keep spending for legal fees, when we could all just sit down and say, let's agree to disagree. We all have a common goal, let's move forward, let's collaboratively work together, whether it be you're a Republican or you're a Democrat, work my partisanship, we all have the same agenda, this is our own. We all need to work together for the future of our community and the good of our children. And I believe we can do that. I believe we have, I look forward to working with Mr. Berry. I'm certain that if we get elected, there'll be heated conversations. I'm a very strong opinionated man. He's a very strong opinionated man, but I believe we both have the same agenda. If we can meet the center and work together with that, I think we can achieve great things in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forbes, what civic and or nonprofit organizations have you been affiliated with?
I'm a 25-year member of the Elks of Prescott. I just transferred to the Bangor Elks. I was, uh, I'm a 22-year main registered master guide. I do a lot of, uh, volunteer time. I guided hunts for the Wounded Warrior Project, done a lot of volunteer time for sick children, Make-A-Wish Foundation, moose hunts, bear hunts, things of that fashion. I've donated my cabins that I owned in Aristic County to a number of charitable events. Um, I contribute a lot of my time to the youth, um, senior citizens in the community. I volunteer a lot of time for Veterans Administration stuff. I am a disabled vet myself. I find if I have one of my servicemen going and do a residential call for a veteran that's in need and they don't have the money for, uh, for the bill, I'll tell them that they've already paid it with their service to the country and thank them. Um, that's how I put forth my, uh, my thanks to our country and the people that have given their devotion to us. So that's what I would do.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm actively involved and, you know, you'll, we say this a lot tonight. Um, the, the youth in town, the rec, I'm, I'm a volunteer coach, uh, pretty much every season of the year. Um, doesn't matter what the sport is. Um, my wife and I, uh, both get involved where we see we need to. Uh, heavily involved, uh, in my church, Crosspoint Church. I'm on the school committee there, uh, involved in many, many different groups, uh, within that church, spend a lot of time there, uh, and, and look forward to continuing that on. Uh, prior to Herman, um, I've been involved in, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs of America, uh, up north, up in, on the Malacita Indian Reservation, was involved in that. Uh, some committees in Holton as well, Parks and Rec Committee. Um, so a lot, a lot of my time I spend volunteering for, uh, the town I live in, basically.
Mr. Berry, who inspired you and why?
That, that's a great question. Uh, and probably my biggest inspiration is my dad. He's someone that I have always looked up to and always takes a very level-headed approach to things, and I find there's great value in that. And that's something, um, every day I try, uh, to bring that forward to all that I do, uh, professionally, personally, uh, and I just, I, I value that relationship that I have with my, my dad, uh, but he's my, my inspiration and I, I try to transfer that down to, to my kids too.
Mr. Forbes, who inspired you and why?
Uh, I have to think honestly, the person that inspires me the most in my life is my wife Heidi. Uh, my wife is, uh, more than just my partner. She, uh, she honestly saved my life 15 years ago. Um, my wife's the first girl I ever kissed when I was a child. Uh, we went through life, had our own families, got divorced, uh, found each other again, started dating. I was going through a rough period in my life. Probably without my wife, I wouldn't be here today. And I get up every morning at 3:30 to go to work to my shop. I do that to take care of my wife, be a hardworking man for my wife. She takes care of us. I went through about a cancer the past few years. I was very sick. My wife was there for me every step of the way, never complained. Uh, if I needed something, she was always there. I kept a lot of things from her while I was sick, which wasn't fair. Thinking that you're doing the right thing for the person in your life, sometimes you're not. But I honestly consider Heidi inspires me. She's the reason why I get up every morning, go to work, put in 60, 70 hours a week and come home covered in human feces.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Forbes, what town service, uh, I mean, to you? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this. What town service do you think is the best or the one that you use the most?
Free trash bin, of course. Um, it's actually funny saying this, it's the only time I've ever lived in my entire existence that's part of your town space. I think that's incredible. I always had to do pay as you throw. Um, I think the best service that we actually have in town is our fire department. You know how incredible these guys are? You show up, they're always joyful, they're always willing to talk, you can stop in and visit and they'll show you stuff around. And I, I just donated some fire hydrants to the youth community, went in, they were just so excited to get these characters that I made. I, I think Chief Sullivan does a great job, his crew does a great job. I've reached out and asked for trainings from my crew, from them. Just, they're incredible people and they're a great asset to the community. So thank you, Mr. Sullivan, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Berry.
Could you repeat that one more time?
I would. What town service do you think is the best? Right now, this is like talking about your children, I'm sorry. Or the one that you use the most?
Yeah, I, and I'm not trying to keep bringing rec into this, but definitely the rec department is what we use the most. I would say probably our most improved and impactful service as of late, I would agree with our first response program that we've implemented with Chief Sullivan and, and the crew there. I think that has been, uh, a, a much needed addition to the town and, and I would call it a, a lifesaving addition to the town, uh, and something that I feel people are, are, you know, see, they're seeing benefits from that rather quickly.
I tried to do this right and I think I'm, I'm right. We're ready for a new question? Okay. Mr. Berry, why are you running?
I'm running because I just want to stay involved in a lot of things that we have, uh, going on in town. Um, I really didn't intend, uh, to run for council this year. Um, but as, uh, we were going through the transition, uh, as I was moving out from the manager position, um, it just, it really felt like I, it was a, a good opportunity to, to stay involved, uh, at a level that would, would be more impactful, uh, than just the, you know, as the volunteer level that I've been in. Uh, we have a lot of good things. We have a lot of, uh, businesses and residents of Herman who have been very heavily involved in a lot of things that we're doing, uh, as far as funding for different, uh, projects and programs we have in town. And I just want to stay involved and, and ensure that that continues going in the right direction and just be able to offer my input, uh, on those different items.
Mr. Forbes.
A couple of reasons for me. Um, earlier this year, a family friend decided to run for Congress, Austin, Ontario. Um, I instantly jumped on board to join Austin's campaign committee in volunteer form. Austin used to be my spotter when I raised Ray Scott when he was a kid. Um, he's come a long ways in his life and I had a conversation with Austin in January and asked him, why are you doing this? And he said, somebody asked you, Jay, you know, this is what we have to do. If you're willing to run your mouth about it, you better be willing to put some skin in the game. And I thought about that. And this, I keep kicking the dead horse about this infrastructure thing, but I too am with the city of Bangor all the time. And as a matter of fact, I was with the director today. And I keep hearing all these conversations over the years about when is your town going to do something about this? And it dawned on me, you know, Austin, at 30 years old, you're a brave man. I'm a 50-year-old man. I need to do something about this. So I decided, because of this contract, to put my skin in the game and put my money where my mouth is and help our community move forward, because I know what the impact will be if I don't.
Yeah, Mr. Forbes, what line, line items in the budget would you fight not to cut?
I would definitely, I made a note about this earlier today when I was looking at the budget as a matter of fact. Um, I wouldn't cut any budget for the fire department. I saw that, oh, the highest safety increase was half a million dollars. It went up a price of $561,828 budget between 2023 and 2024. Uh, our 2023 budget was 1.13 million dollars and our 2024 budget was 1.63 million dollars. I wouldn't touch that a bit. Like Mr. Berry said, uh, it's a lifesaving measure. The, the gentleman, the people that work in our EMS department, our fire department, I wouldn't cut a penny of what they do. They put their life on the line every day for the community, for every one of us in the community. And that's the one place where I wouldn't cut any expenses is with our fire department's budget.
Mr. Berry.
So as far as items that, or, or line items in the budget that I would defend or, or not cut, I would consider all of them to be in that situation. Uh, we don't budget based on, uh, items that we don't need. I mean, our, our budget is, is very tight to begin with. Um, if you look at our revenues and expenses for this year, that tells you all you need to know. Uh, there, there is no extra in our budgets. Departments work very hard to, uh, be as reasonable with their budgets as they can be, uh, without cutting services that hurt the department. So I, I don't, I don't feel there's any area in the budget that I wouldn't defend and, and not cut.
Mr. Berry, how can Herman retain its rare, uh, character with the pressures of the increased resident, residential and commercial development?
Uh, to kind of go back to what I had said earlier, um, it's, it's allowing zoning to, to do what it's intended to do. Uh, I think we have, uh, enough in there. Uh, we just went through the charter, uh, review committee, or excuse me, the comprehensive plan committee, uh, to look at items like that. And, and the comprehensive plan is, is a tool that helps guide the town. Uh, and part of that is the land use ordinance and, uh, different aspects that come along with that. So I think as long as we keep our zoning, uh, where it is, uh, let, let the land use ordinance do its thing, uh, I, I think we will maintain that.
I agree with Mr. Berry 100% on that. Uh, the village of Herman has a downtown feel of old yesterday. It kind of reminds me when you drive through Unity. When you drive through Unity, it just has that different feel. Since Gardner, we did Main Street here and put the lamps in and the new sidewalks in, it just has that older feel. Uh, the zoning, keeping the commercialized, everything in the industrial parks. I agree with Mr. Berry, that's, that's the only way to keep Herman the way it is now. Keep the center of the village, the old traditional, and keep the zoning the way it is with all the industrial and the industrial parks.
Uh, the final question, what qualification do you have that will make you a good Canetzel member?
Um, I have many, many, many years management experience, um, except mine was a little different. When you're on an oil tanker, thousands of miles out to sea and there are 22 of you onboard the vessel, if you're not on your game 100% of the time, somebody dies. Same way when I was in the Marine Corps. If I didn't fire the round from my tank in the appropriate direction, somebody died. My attention to detail is precise. I follow direction, I listen, I read, I follow policies. Uh, like I said, I'm a man of my word. Sometimes it's a fault. I give somebody my word and I go down the wrong path. Well, I gave my word, I'd be there, I'll still be there. So I have to say that my experience in the past, my management experience, I'm a go-getter. I don't take any crap off anybody and there's no gray area. I think that's an asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
I, I would say, uh, some of my strongest qualifications is just having been working for the town the last eight years. Um, I started as a residential lister for the revaluation program that was taking place, uh, and literally have, uh, started at a, a minimum wage, no benefited job and, and have, um, really gone up from there, uh, in the code enforcement department, tax assessing, uh, town manager. I feel like I bring a, a very good working knowledge of almost every asset or, or, um, department in town. Um, and having been involved and knowing what the department heads do, I think that brings a lot of value to the discussions that we'll be having at the council level. Um, so when we bring up items like the, uh, agreement with Bangor wastewater, I can, I can fill people in. agreement with Bangor wastewater, I can I can fill people in on on just exactly where the conversation is and and where we are with that. Because it, there's a lot that goes on at the town office that most people don't realize. And then when it's brought up in a meeting, you know, that that's usually when it is discussed. But there's a lot going on and and it's good to have that knowledge and be able to discuss it publicly for the resident businesses.
Thank you. And Mr. Barry, will you give your closing remarks?
Yeah, I just wanted to again, thank everybody for coming out here tonight. Again, I'm I'm running just with the idea of looking to serve the community that I'm currently living in, trying to expand programs and and what we offer to our residences, our residents and businesses. I I think my experience, I I feel everybody here in town knows me somewhat and have seen what I've done over the last eight years. And I would just say that's the same approach I'll be taking as a counselor if if voted in. So I just would appreciate your vote come June. Thank you.
I too would like to thank everybody for your time coming this evening. And I'm a little more hands on approachy, I'm a I'm a grab it and growl kind of guy. So I think between my my way of doing business and Mr. Barry's way of doing business, I think we can get a long way together. I have the ability to bite onto something and not like, oh, I don't want anything, I'm not a procrastinator. Something needs to be done, I do it right then, right now, let's get it over with. It's always been my mentality. My wife says it's a love hate relationship she has with me that way. She says, I love the fact that you get things done right away, but look at the work you cause us. So but I I honestly think that my door will always be open, my phone will always be on. I I want to be there for the people. The people have been there for me. I want to be the voice of the working man. I want to be the person that can go in. If somebody's afraid to have a voice in that council, I want to be their voice. And I have no problem doing that. And I think I can work with just about anybody to find that common goal. And I thank you, and I hope that you can think about supporting me when you check that box on the 11th. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Men, there are three candidates running for town council for two empty seats. Please vote, your voice matters. Thank you.